Hello, Carl. So you need. Yes, July 1, 2025.
I did make those two changes under Chairman's signature on communications, public communication. I had Commissioner Huber making the motion to second it. Commissioner Ford, he did make a second. And then under Chairman's signature on annual compensation, I had Commissioner Vera, and I changed it to Commissioner Huber.
Under the AP vouchers, could we add something after the Commissioner Ertman and Borton abstained from voting, something to the effect of due to no warrant numbers on pertinent vouchers?
You're right, it sounds better.
I also approve that.
Anything else, Marty?
No, thank you. Copy the other ones. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Maintain the motion to approve quick ad hoc minutes as amended.
Still moved.
Second.
Proper second to approve the minutes as amended. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Becky. Moving on to Chairman's signature on supplemental agreement on the Wyoming Transportation Commission, Weston County, Wyoming and BNSF Railway with construction and maintenance of a new biodeuct in Weston County, Wyoming. Where's that going in? It's, I believe, isn't this the flagging?
Yeah, this is on the bridge.
Yeah, the flagging for the bridge. Okay, thank you. So I got some questions about that. Half a million dollars roughly, is that what this is the number that David threw up?
Not just the flag, no.
It wasn't just the flagging at half a million dollars?
If you look in there, I believe the flagging was like 250 and something else was.
Oh.
Yeah, and they were paying.
They paid for that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was like, assumption it was gonna be on top of everything else. Do you know when that's going on? Sorry? Do you know when that will take place? Probably in the fall, huh?
My assumption is we've been waiting for 12 years, so.
Just in rush, I mean.
Future. Because it's gonna go back to 10 more years if we do this.
That'll make good pictures though when it goes on. If you hear about it, let me know.
A long time. I mean, this is a long time.
So another concern. Marty brought up issues with our county roads a couple meetings ago or meeting ago, whatever it was. That's a section of property that was listed as Ertman's. Are we not sure this is a county road? Legally defined all the way through?
Actually, it is. No one is because when it becomes a US highway, because it was a US highway and it was a US highway cut across, what happened was the state of Wyoming purchases land. And so they own that land for that. And when they're done with the highway, then they grant it back. We did the same thing. The same thing happened on Breakneck Road up north. So when the highway has a portion of the road as theirs, and when they are done with it, they grant it back to the county.
So we're positive, all our easements and everything are?
Except one.
So, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd rather have somebody else speak on that.
I'm sorry?
I'd rather have my husband speak on that.
That makes sense. Breakneck Road was once highway stuff?
There's an entry, so the highway at one time went through Pauline D., right through it.
Really?
And one time it went right through the building. So when they moved the highway above.
This is the one that they wanted.
They kept, but then they moved the highway.
That's weird.
Then that portion of Breakneck Road, it was US highway. They gave it.
The stuff right behind to be there?
North of.
North of it?
And behind.
Oh, at the curve. Okay.
He literally parked across the highway and.
You could drive right.
Wow.
Where the chapel is at one time. You drove right by it.
Well, the Flying V's not as old as I figured it, I thought it was then.
1928.
We got one pairs of it. Just gotta put it out.
It's built after.
Number of years.
After.
Gorgeous place.
This is just about the railroad easement.
I wonder, you know, I assume if things fall apart on this whole bridge ordeal, that this is just an all void at that point, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like to me, reading through the documents, that the state of Wyoming went through quite an ordeal to get the railroad to get to this far.
Yeah.
And that's been a big hiccup with this, in my opinion, for years, is the railroad part. And for them to get to this point, this may be, I mean.
Good sign.
A good sign. That's a good way of putting it. Thank you.
Well, it appears it has to be done today.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a long time.
Yeah. Now, this doesn't support that bridge or anything like that. It's just the road's part of it, right?
The way to read it, in order to get the bridge down, you have to part of the railroad's permission because of their easements. And so this is the final. State of Wyoming getting that agreement.
So that the bridge can be done.
Yes.
Awesome.
It lies in the road.
Wow. I mean, it's just a regular roll of.
Hiccup.
Wonder how they got BNSF on board? They don't budge on nothing. One juncture, didn't they, railroad offer the county a fair amount of money to remove it completely?
Long time ago.
My dad was telling me that.
Long time ago. And then they. In my history of it, then they turned 183 and said.
No, we wanted it.
No, we wanted it. Because the discussions have been forever to just have a crossing.
It's a great crossing.
And had a great crossing and. Neither DOT nor railroad were interested. And unfortunately, that bridge is just deteriorating as we expand.
Got to enjoy by there three or four weeks ago, take a look at it.
It's a cool bridge.
It's a cool bridge. It needs to be preserved. Needs to be redone. I think that some juncture of the. Huh? Things. It's gonna fall in. Wildly out of control on cost, we can still shut that whole operation down, right?
Make a motion to approve the Chairman's signature on the supplement agreement among the Highway Transportation Commission, Weston County, Wyoming and BNSF Railroad for construction maintenance of new biodeuct in Weston County, Wyoming.
Second.
Motion property second for the Chairman's signature on the BNSF Railway Construction and Maintenance forms. Is there any discussion?
Thanks to the state of Wyoming. To get, I mean, to get these negotiations because we weren't getting them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was it Department of Transportation that did this, that got this through?
So all bridges in the state of Wyoming are under the direction of Wyoming DOT.
Okay.
So a bridge has a definition of 20 feet or longer. And so they are, it's a federal also. But it doesn't matter if it's your bridge, we have to maintain them, but they're under the direction of the DOT. And so what this was, Mr. Chairman. So what this was, was what called, was a. What's the, a bridge off replacement.
Roads.
Roads. And so what happens is it's a federal fund that pays 90% and the county pays 10%. And you have to apply for those because that comes through federal funding. So you have to have your Congress approved the money and all that. So you get on quite a waiting list. And we started this a long time ago because at the time, I believe the bridge was rated. See, so the state of Wyoming comes in and rates the bridges and tells you, we're gonna condemn them or you're gonna put a weight limit on them, that kind of thing. And so they had already done that, that has a weight limit on it. But I believe at the time that we had to, 76%. Well, that was at least 10 years ago, almost 12 years ago. So every time that something happens, it sets it back. And there'll be a point where that bridge is, will be just condemned, you know. And the money keeps going up.
Good thing he always got that landfill done out there. That could have been a big problem. How big a problem is it for that community down there?
So in our deliberations at one time, when the bridge got set back one time, is if the bridge, if you were going south on Highway 85, there is a railroad bridge there that connects with Highway 16.
Chair short.
Old Highway 16.
It's a combination of things.
Which is South Summit, no.
Yes.
So South Summit and Highway 85, there's a railroad bridge right there. If that railroad bridge should ever fake or be closed.
Oh, they are?
Because of maybe something happens here on Main Street, you have no way of doing that. Those people have no way of doing that. In order for you to go south without that bridge, they either have to take a two-track trail and go all the way down on private roads. Or they'd have to go to do yourself a foot.
Whoa.
So the importance of this.
That's like 35 miles.
It's the same with the north.
I think if just ever shut down. For people to be on this side to get to that side.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
That I'm aware of. My God. I was going and doing something with one of the city councilmen years ago. Get there. Train's there and he didn't wanna wait, so he took the server. Uh, huh?
How is it be?
Oh, I know that book. I know that book. I have to use it all the time. Mine's half-filled already for the year. Yeah, the law's changed in Wyoming. Now you have to keep a record book of notary.
You really change that stamp too. So one time you put Weston County on there, you don't put the state on it?
Nope.
Looks like your tuition.
Yeah, it is so vastly different from my previous.
You know, I don't know what happened, but I didn't pay attention to that in the legislature. I wouldn't listen to it.
I didn't know it was coming until I was reapplying.
I would've listened to that, you know, would've been interesting to me.
I'm reading through that and then I'm comparing it to the last one. I'm going, it's like 50% different, added.
They sterilized it.
Oh, my God. I will say this, there is absolutely no question on what you have to do anymore.
Well, they fully pointed it out.
Yeah. You're notary? Oh, okay.
Never did. Don't know why. Okay. I brought it.
Well, for, at the newsletter, it's nice to have that in-house.
Wonderful. I agree.
Cause Cam will have six, seven things a week sometimes.
It's amazing how many people.
All right, let's move on to Resolution 2025-16. This is Board signature on adoption of the county budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Board signature on Resolution 2025-16 for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Second.
Motion property seconded for the Board signature on Resolution 25-16. Discussion?
I would like to maybe put a memo out this year that says that we would appreciate having a conversation prior to emergencies for people spending over their budget. If we could have a memo that says, we're asking that you stay within your budget, trying to reduce the amount of budget adjustment hearings that we're having. And that we're not, we're not saying that it won't happen, but it needs to have a board discussion prior to the money being spent and going over.
I'd like to comment on the cash reserve. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about our finances and $3.3 million seems like a lot of money, but last month's bills alone were 1.5 million. So I'd like to, everybody just to be aware that it's not a lot of money in the big scheme of things. So I think it's important that we maintain a healthy. Something to fall back on in event major issues.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, any type of catastrophic because of the incredible cost of things. And when you go down in it, I would say like when we had the Black Thunder Bridge, you come up with that money first and then they reimburse you. But if we had something catastrophic, such as that was, I think we're very fortunate in the fact that we do have some that would protect it. And it's interesting to me that there's a philosophy that we should be conservative and save our money, and then the next breath is, but you have the money to spend. Which way is it?
I had a question on just one entry here. What is NOAT, N-O-A-T? It's opioid funds and it's what paid for the drug dog that, that are two, right? And it can only be spent for certain things. We can't touch it really as, or we improve the expenditure of it. But the Sheriff's Department though, but it's gotta be used for.
Drugs.
Drug-related. Okay. Things. So when it comes in, it's a federal deal, right? It comes in from that settlement with whatever opioid company it was that they had that class action lawsuit against, I'm pretty sure.
I think it was oversubscribing.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion on that? All right. All those in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2025-16, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Suzie gets grumpy when they spend too much money.
Suzie does get grumpy.
But you know, that's a bit, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of a, the whole idea is there's a checks and balances type thing. And so if that comes in that there's a worry that something's happening here, it's a good thing for the other to, okay, we have an interesting thing going on here. And so that discussion comes back around and we look. And so part of my issue is with the memo, having a memo, is every time we have a budget adjustment, that doesn't always reflect some, you know, what's the point of having a budget if we don't stick to the budget? And so that's an interesting deal where when it doesn't, we don't fit within those parameters, then we need to change something because they've happened so many. And you want me to sign this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the grumpy part.
There she is.
That's the grumpy part.
I've seen it. So have I. More so than me. Most of my life. No. That is on my.
All right. Move on to 24-hour alcoholic beverage sale permit for Mr. Kaiser at Weston County Fairgrounds. The permit fee would be July 26, 2025 through August 3, 2025. August 3? So it should be 4 here?
It should be the 3rd because.
Okay.
Fair.
I'll make the note on here.
Fair is only eight days and not nine.
So he, no, he, I'm gonna put a 4.
It's cleared.
24 hours?
Amber put that on there.
Excuse me?
Try one to four in case it goes bad.
No, it's the 4th.
Well, okay. Yeah, that'll work. It's fine. So we gave her a check for $225, so.
He tells me the dates. So 9/8. 26. 1, 2, 3, make 2. So it ends at 2 o'clock on the 4th. That's 9/8.
Right.
So what? I'll make sure because if it needs to, they need to bring you more money than you go. So the 4th is a Monday.
It's a Monday after. I don't understand why you made that because the.
No, he won't. And he paid, he paid through the 3rd.
Okay.
So I just need to change it on here.
Okay.
Okay.
Because, I mean, everything is done by noon on Sunday.
And that's right.
Because the junior rodeo's done Monday.
Okay, but he said he wanted to be able to sell on the Sunday.
So wouldn't it go until midnight on Sunday night?
Until 2 o'clock Monday morning on the 4th. And he's paid through that.
Yeah. That would work.
Okay, yeah.
I don't.
Third, not before. He's good. He paid through that.
Clear and not. So it's a pleasure to the Board. Mr. Kaiser needs, and it says on the permit date, 7/26 through 8/3.
Yeah.
Make a motion. Sorry.
On the permit, it says through the 4th at 2:00 AM. So it's not for the 4th, but it does go into the 4th.
So I didn't. That is right.
Yeah. That's why it says the 4th, because it goes in to 2 o'clock in the morning on the 4th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the Chairman's signature on 24-hour permit.
I'll cut.
For Mason Kaiser doing business at Weston County Fairgrounds. Second?
That's okay.
Motion property second for the Chairman's signature on 9-day, 24-hour alcohol beverage sales for Mr. Kaiser. Discussion?
Is the alcohol beverage sale, is that how that's ordered? I know the 24-hour permit for free.
Yes, check for malt beverage permit.
And he is doing business as the fairgrounds. It sells for the fairgrounds. That's why it's doing business as Weston County Fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
This is just my personal opinion. I'm just gonna put it out there. I'm not comfortable with alcohol sales with the junior rodeo. I just don't think that looks right. I don't think that, it doesn't look right to me. And I just, I'm not comfortable with it and I'm just gonna put that out there that, I'm probably gonna be a no on this because I don't mind some of the adults when you have a ranch rodeo, when you have that type of thing. But when we go beyond a kid's rodeo and we have adults with beer and. I'm uncomfortable. And so I'm gonna probably be a no on it. It's not necessarily for the total fact of it. It's just, there's a sign on the things that say no alcohol anyway. And that's where this should be, in my humble opinion, a place where that is not happening. It's youth-oriented. So I'll just want to put my two cents.
I respect that.
Thank you.
I respect that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman?
Could we get it, instead of doing it on the weekend of the junior rodeo, could we just do it to the Friday or Saturday? So I'm not sure what's on that schedule.
You know, at this point, we'll have to do the permit the whole time. But if you, as a fairgrounds, want to not have it on that day, that's your option. You personally, as a fairgrounds, can say no.
Would that be sort of an accurate portrayal of, you know, Weston County, 1903, where the sun set on the Old West?
Oh, for sure. I mean, yeah, yeah. You definitely had the changing of the guard and times are changing. Your Cowboys and Indians battle. I mean, Lightning Creek was essentially the last one. And then vigilante business has been going on, still goes on now, but just something like Slim's ordeal was, it's pretty Old West there. That's.
Well, right on, you know, right on Main Street and the trestle.
Yeah, that's.
There's still vigilante. But that was, you know, that movie scene of a mob showing up and taking someone away from the sheriff, there wouldn't a heck of a lot more of that happened after 1903, I don't think.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So it was the end of a, end of an era. So it was the end of a, end of an era, I think. And it's, you know, times are changing.
It's, we're not selling today.
My assumption is the reasoning for the signage for no alcoholic beverages out there is preventing people from bringing it in, is that correct? Well, it's a pleasure to the board. We wanna move forward with kind of a, I guess there's probably a motion on the board. All right. All those in favor of chairman's signature on the alcohol permit as it exists, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Liquor license renewal.
Oh, oh, good. Um, yes. So, uh, we submitted the transfer application. Everything look great?
Get it from Pizza Barn to.
Pizza Barn, Pan Cooley Pizza Barn to Pizza Barn LLC.
Everything's in order?
Yeah, yeah. Everything looks great.
Make motion to approve the liquor license renewal transfer from the Pan Cooley Pizza Barn to Pizza Barn LLC. Second?
Probably seconded to approve the transfer of the liquor license. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you.
Yay.
Now we have a.
Finally.
Chairman's signature on 11 24-hour permits for Jessica Lundgren from 8:1 to 8:11. So this is, Jessica is doing business as Silent Holler Homestead LLC. And the event is for the rally at Four Corner and to sell at Four Corners. A beer tent? Okay. It's another malt beverage. Somebody need to see it? So this, you're all good with this one, Amber?
Yeah, she did it last year. She sent us a map. I'm sorry, I didn't put that on there. The same as last year. She got approval from the landowner.
It's like that farmer's market type thing, isn't it?
Um, I think she is the one that sets that up.
Pleasure to the board.
I'd make a motion to approve chairman's signature on the 11 24-hour permits for Jessica Lundgren during the rally at Four Corners. Second?
Discussion?
Also adding the order on the malt, the malt beverage.
Yes, malt beverage.
That's better than that motion.
All those in favor of chairman's signature on the Silent Holler Homestead LLC permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. And then I want to take five minutes, hang out for, for bathroom break, right?
10 minutes? I'll be getting some drinks.
What we do, treasure report quick?
We do that right to 3:30.
All right. Yeah, good idea. I used to just.
He's sleeping too.
There you go.
See, I don't hear either. And I got a text message. I'm afraid everyone is going home. Not that it isn't public, but it's not necessary. It's just an interesting place that they put that. Same reason, so you wrap the whole room.
That's what he's on. It's just like 65 the next two days.
Well, one or two will make up for that. We'll have a, of an October, it's under 12, it's pretty. You've had four. We have to have weird weather. Who needs the snow? Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Well.
Friendly design.
Go ahead.
Can I have, can I throw this pen at both of you? Can you send one closer? No, that's not how that works.
Yeah, it is. Like fire with fire.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the board signatures on the treasures report.
Second?
Motion properly seconded to approve the board signatures on the chairman's, or on the treasures report.
The chairman's report.
Chairman's report.
Good for you.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post.
More late meetings for the regular meeting.
Three and a half minutes.
It was like three minutes. That was a long meeting. I thought it was the shortest meeting ever recorded.
No, the one on the courthouse staff was pretty.
I wasn't here for that one.
It was a COVID one.
There's three of us out there on that.
Oh, it was the solid, the solid.
It was a, it was sage. Solid waste. Probably carrying that night. That's the whole.
It was pretty short, three seconds.
Yeah, we proved man.
Oh, you think it's the same as others?
Well, that's because we didn't have the guys to do it.
This is just, I'm thinking of what you say.
I don't know. I've been asking to get them. Maybe you need to send a memo off to them.
Those are 30 hours.
Oh, I'm, okay. I need to contact her anyways to get me the file that I need.
Yeah, I'll tell her about it again.
I'm up to snuff, so you're up to snuff.
It's just that one behind Marty and then the one behind you.
Oh, there's two of them, one more too.
And then all of, there's like a, a box right there. Yeah, Ed needs to take that stuff. That's the stuff that came from Cindy's father.
Over to O.C. Charlie.
So I'm gonna open the window and just take this stuff.
Okay.
So move the dumpster over here. Move the dumpster over here. Thank you so much. Does that have a hundred dollars in it?
All right. Go in recess for 15 minutes or so.
Good, I can get where you might need this term.
I admire that. I really do. You know, I was talking about how I was getting great signal in this building now. Not today.
I'm sorry, I can go this way.
I know. Murphy, Murphy is my uncle. What kind of cards you like?
And for us, you know, going all those kind of games.
Texas Hold'em and poker, I like both.
Yeah.
I like draw on poker. I don't really care for all those weird things and I hate wild cards.
Oh, yeah.
That's where they, they didn't have to call it.
Yeah.
You know, had to have a card for you to trump it. That was pretty interesting.
This isn't anywhere but the doggy and the bear cat out there on the sidewalk. But what?
That is a bobcat.
Bobcat, whatever. Sorry. I'm from Newcastle, okay? They're looking, they're, they're looking pretty worn. Bear cat, a little whatever.
They need a little touch up.
I have no idea how long it'll last, but I redid ours out in front of the doggies and it sure looks better. There's a lot of them in town and they just don't look good. We need to. Wasn't there a youth group that was doing that?
I think so. And you pay the fellow fee and they would ban them. Becky knows. I think she may be the one that got to bog that one.
Well, here at this building, that makes, that's good, I think. It would be nice if they looked good. I thought of going around and offering that to people, but I don't really want to take it away from the group that was doing it.
You guys need us here for the communications strike powers discussion at 11?
You know, I really don't know. I, I see an email sent to me the other day or yesterday that came out. Like, I don't have a crystal ball to know when things are gonna come up, you know? I, I just don't know.
So nothing that you know in particular?
No, not that I know of.
District court going on, so normal day today.
Oh, my gosh. Perfect day for that, isn't it?
I can see where something might come up.
That's it. She asked me, I was anything I can think of. We may, we may have. Down to the office and I'll make sure my air back. Seen it?
You take care.
I love it.
See ya, Jeannie.
See the same thing yesterday, like, yeah.
Does he got it? Big bail.
I think he's in the back to pick up and he's looking for me, right?
I'm recording again.
For him, he kinda comes down and he kinda legal's up and he looks rowdy. And he is not rowdy. He's a horse show big guy. He's my watchdog. He's in later and wants you haul everything out of here. He want me to get up.
Calling me back to order. 58? Yeah, I think she turned it back.
Yes, you did. There's Jeannie.
Morning, Drew. You're, uh, scheduled for a 10 o'clock update?
Yes, good morning. Am I up? Are you running on time this morning? Good job! All right, great. And I think Jeannie is on somewhere too. Um, I'll go ahead and get started. Just a lot of updates for you this morning. So the Newcastle BLM, uh, did contact us on Friday. I think you did receive that email, Commissioner Todd. That we were supposed to get notice yesterday of the administrative draft of the final EIS for cooperating agency review. I did not get that yesterday. Did you get it, Commissioner?
No, good, I saw him.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So we were supposed to get it yesterday for a 30-day review. This is not a public document. This is just for cooperating agencies. We'll have 30 days. So once we get that, the clock will start ticking and Commissioner Todd will probably be reaching out to all three counties, maybe to set up a virtual meeting next week just to check in, um, frequently within this 30 days so we can make sure that we get the proper review and information back to BLM. So that's really all I've got on that right now. Any questions?
No, last one I got from him is Friday, so.
Me too. But I'm excited to see what's in it because I do think between the change in administrations, we are going to see some differences in alternative E, which is now a proposed, um, R and P. And it'll be the balanced, the new balanced alternative. And I do think that there are some differences maybe that were in our favor based on our comments. So I'm excited to see it. comments, so I am excited to see it, um, and once I review, we'll make sure to let you all know before we submit comments back to BLM. Um, Black Hills, so we recently were asked, we, we still haven't started the formal vapor process, we've been told that's gonna be maybe after the first of the year, uh, that that notice of intent will be filed, so we're still in kind of the assessment gather dat- gab, data gathering phase, they did send us a request for an evaluation to submit information regarding, um, potential wilderness areas that need to be looked at, or, um, inventory roadless areas. Fortunately for Western, Weston County, you don't really have any, so we did not provide information from your county, Cook County had three areas that we looked at and provided information, and that deadline was yesterday. On the heels of that, I think all of you are aware that the USDA Secretary Rawlins put out a note that the Forest Service will be rescinding the inventory roadless rule, um, we don't really know what that's gonna look like at this point, we are working with the state and with WCCA on that project, so there'll be more to come, I do believe it's going to be a formal withdrawal, meaning there is going to be an opportunity for public comment on that rule, and I do think they're gonna do some, some form, I'm not sure if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be in the form of NIPA, or if it's gonna be in some other format, but they will do some level of formal something in the next year, and they do need to go, they are going to go through a process to formally, um, withdraw it, I tend to think it's going to be some sort of NIPA document, because I think there's gonna be kind of a range of alternatives that they're gonna look at, from withdraw the whole thing, to leave portions of it in place, so, I think there's more to come on that, just be prepared for it, but we've got a lot of people looking at it and a lot of eyes on it, so Wyoming should be inserted in process and well positioned to do that. Are there any comments on Black Hills or roadless?
I don't believe so, Drew.
Okay, so going along with that, this is something you guys might wanna look at, the Wyoming State Forestry Division is currently doing a rulemaking on their emergency fire suppression account rules, it is under comment right now, the comment deadline is August sixth, and this would be for looking at a revision of rules that would go into effect next year, not this year, but I think that you will wanna make sure that your emergency management and your fire departments are looking at that, and if you can lend some support to the State Forestry Division, it might be something that you should consider.
Okay.
That's all I have on them, okay?
All right.
Just FYI.
You bring it up with, um, Homeland Security Bill, and Daniel, I don't know much about that, honestly, Drew, I, I guess I've never dealt with that side of it.
Um, and you kind of cut out, Commissioner, can you repeat for me, which?
The, what, what they're, what are they proposing doing or changing, I guess, do you know?
Oh, well, it is, it is on my list to review and comment, but the comment is August sixth, and I have like six comment deadlines before that, so I have it really reviewed in detail, yeah, um, but I do have, I am, I do have a call scheduled with Matt Marshall, who is the deputy forester, um, just to see what this is about, um, what the purpose of it is, and, and how we can lend support, so, I'm happy to share that, once I get that conversation, but I, I have not read it and I can't give you any of that information today.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, just a couple other quick things, um, we did have, and this is direct to Weston County, we did have a Thunder Basin National Grassland Working Group tour and meeting a couple weeks ago, uh, June twenty-fourth, I did participate, um, we went out to the field, we came in from the south side, which was kind of a new way for me to come in, usually I come in from the top army in Weston County, um, lot, a lot of vegetation at the end of June, there's been a lot of moisture, so the dogs are looking, um, the density looks very even across the board, it doesn't look like a lot of expansion or moonscape out there, so, I think that last year's numbers showed that we were just over ten thousand acres of dogs, but they had a very even dispersment, um, and as we all know, under the new twenty twenty plan, uh, the ten thousand acre target is a key figure, um, we think that they, they have not, we have not got the mapping results yet, but we really don't think that they've done a large expansion since last year, so we're expecting that the mapping is gonna be somewhere around the same number, um, and we'll be looking at control, um, and required plague management in some areas, so, mapping is currently being completed, in September, we will have another working group meeting, and, um, we will be looking at the mapping results, which will then trigger a conversation about control, plague management, and what areas we're gonna focus around, the boundary management zones and, and untreated areas, so, we did do that, I will tell you, um, Russ Bacon, as you all know, took early retirement as the Forest Service sue, Rob Robertson, as the Deppless Ranger District, um, or the District Ranger, also took early retirement, they have replaced Rob Robertson.